Subject to reasonable, reasonable fees for them. And I'll get into that in a section, second. But some people may have an idea that, well, if someone's asking it orally, do I have to comply? Yes, an oral request is sufficient. However, best practices would be that if someone is asking it to be, asking for a record over the phone, it might be best to say, hey, you know, but especially if it's complicated. If it's, hey, I need this deed or I need, you know, this document and it's a simple request, not a problem. But if it's, if it's complicated, it may be best to try and get that in writing, just so it's clear. You know, explain the person I work on, I think I know what you want, but you know, if you could provide that in the email so that I know exactly what you want, so I'm not, you know, I'm not providing you information that you don't want.
Just to your point here, if somebody comes in and asks for records of DD four, there's thousands and thousands of pages. Do we have the right to say, what specifically do you want about DD four? I'm not going to mail you tens of thousands of pages.
Well, you, do you have the right? I think that's what should, the, the best practices would be to narrow it down. Do you want a hundred thousand pages of all of DD four, whatever it may be? I don't know which, use TDD four then, for example. Or do you want it limited to a certain time or a certain type? So that, as I was mentioning it before, if you can narrow it down, you may eliminate a potential belief that, you know, you're, you're just trying to provide all of this document, all of these documents to try and hide something. Try and narrow it down, but the person may want a hundred thousand pages. In that situation, I think your, your, your communication with that individual is going to be valuable to say, okay, this is going to take a lot, a lot more time than what we have available. So, you know, bear with me, we'll get them to you over the course of time. But I think that communication is the key. So, I mean, if someone comes in and says, I want all of those, yeah, I mean, they're entitled to them. But in those situations, if it's a lot of documents, you know, maybe the, a combination of, okay, you can come in and look at it if it's available from inspection, I don't know. Sometimes they're on the computer, computer and it's a little bit more difficult. But yeah, the bottom line is the record is open, but most people aren't going to want to have that. They have a specific thing that they're looking for and something that applies to them. And, you know, by communication and conversation, you can narrow it down.
Sometimes they just want a whole bunch of records that they don't even know what they want.
Right, right. And I don't know that we have anything, I don't know, you know. I guess the, you know, looking at it from the standpoint of complying with it, I think it's imperative to try and discuss with them, okay, let's see, do you want a hundred thousand pages of documents?
Do we have the right to say to them, let's narrow this down to what your issue is?
Sure. I mean, what do you mean, right? I mean, communication is open to everybody, if there's no, but can't you say that I'm not going to give that to you?
Okay.
Yeah. No, but reasonableness here, you have to look at it from the standpoint of, in those situations, you better have some documented communication as to what exactly the person is looking for. Does that make sense?
Yeah, but it, it's difficult for somebody in the drainage room to give that much records without specific details. Cause some of those records are handwritten way back when.
They're public records.
They're public records, I'm not just, but it's, you'd have to run each one of them through and scan each one. Cause there's no, they're not on a computer.
Well, we get to the next document where fees are associated with that. I mean, you can charge a fee for that. Someone's going to want and takes, say for instance, one employee, multiple days to do that, then they're going to have to pay the fees because the actual cost of that is something that can be charged.
Okay.
You can't say, no, you can't have them, but you know, in order to devote this much time and attention to this, this request would be this amount.
So do you tell them that ahead of time?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely, you should, because you don't want to tag them with the bill afterwards and, and cause a dispute that way. Mentioned the safeguarding records, you know, generally, it's probably not a concern. But in situations where that is a concern, then you have the right to supervise them. You know, if it's suitable place in the offices or somewhere else, if necessary for the person to view those records. And provide them a reasonable number of copies, again, you know, subject to a fee. Now, most civil things probably aren't going to require a request for, for fees that can be done for free. But in, in many situations, the fee is warranted and is capable of being charged.
With one of those situations, like if, you know, someone says they want to come and look at some records or they want, you know, to see some records, is it, you know, one of those situations where you say, you can come in and look at the records, but if you want, you know, copies of them, that it's going to cost a fee?
Yes.
But it would be free for them to come in and look at?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, if, you know, I, as I mentioned, Ken, I mean, I did, we talked oftentimes to reporters. People come in and look at, you know, past deeds and, and, you know, all the things that are in their office. It's a treasure trove of, of neat documents from the eighteen hundreds. Yeah, right, right there. And they open them up and look at it and know if he assessed. But yeah, the, the reality is, once you start copying things for them, then obviously that is money that is being spent or there's an expense associated with that that we should be able to recover.
What if, what if they come in and ask to review the records at, for free? Or what if it's to the point where they need, someone needs to be there with them to supervise?
Yeah, um, you know, you, you have a situation where, you know, if there's the, the requirement due to the records that they be supervised, then a fee can be associated with that. It has to be applied uniformly, you know, everyone in that situation has to have the same type of fee. And it has to be actual cost. Remember I mentioned earlier, you know, employee benefits and those types of things are not things that can be covered. But in situations where it's going to require someone to supervise them, which we have an obligation to protect the records, that fee can be something that can be charged to recoup some of that loss.
He got requests and I, I stopped it, but in the beginning, you know, title companies. Someone wanting to buy a house and has there been anything recorded since this deed has been conveyed to this individual? And what are they, well, I don't do that. I will certify to a search because I'm an abstractor. I feel that the county should not be liable if something's missed on there. It's just opening us up a line.
You have no obligation.
I have no obligation.
On the show.
Right. I wonder, should I put that, I've seen a couple of reporters that put that on their webpage. We do not certify real estate searches because that falls right into this, I want a copy. But then can you look up, and I said, no, I'm sorry, we don't, we don't.
Yeah, I'm always in favor of, you know, providing those things.
Absolutely, you have a duty to others, right.
Well, no, providing that information, say, my office does not, do you have to know? But I mean, you know, any type of information that provides these types of services, primarily just to eliminate people, you know, if they, if they go to that, they see, oh, do you not do title searches? You know, they're not going to, some probably will, but it might eliminate some of the unnecessary calls to say, hey, we don't do that. Those, those, the title, the deeds are public records, we provide that. But you do not have to search. If they give you, I want all of the deeds between this state and this state, okay, that's different. But are you going to certify title, absolutely not, that's an abstractor, it's a, well, actually an attorney review.
Right, exactly, so we can make that clear. Also, I'll, I'll tell them, they can come in and look at all the records they wish to determine that themselves, but that is supposed to be a public record search.
Yeah, that's, you know, basically what the abstractor does.
Right, so.
You comes in and looks at all of those and they make the certification. But you are not obligated to do that.
And you've been, we've been asked quite a bit over the years and I've stopped.
You know, and this is fulfillment of a request made to pay contention for payment of the fee and estimate expenses. We talked about that. But they cannot exceed the actual cost of providing the service. And as I mentioned, it doesn't cover employee benefits, depreciation, maintenance, electricity or insurance associated with the administration.
I got another quick question to the whole, you know, coming in to look at the documents and stuff for free. You know, and they say that it's come, they're coming in for, you know, a quick search. Well, then it turns into three, four hours. At what point, you know, can they say, well, this is going to cost a fee then?
Well, it depends on what service is required of the custodian.
Right.
And Karen's office, I don't think you necessarily supervise them.
Yeah, Alan just fit the bill there and we welcome anyone to come in and look. But they can be there all day, sometimes, day for the times, if they come from our state. We just, you know, we go back to the ball to make sure we're supervising that things aren't being, you know, the book is, is protected, things like that, but it's not, well, can't be all the week.
But in situations, again, case by case scenario, in situations where because of the record, although it be in public, is susceptible to, you know, someone wanting to change it. And you have to have a supervisor there, supervision of the person there. They have to be there for an extended period of time. At that point in time, the custodian can charge a fee for that. Because of the, they're not able to do the county business.
Right.
Because they're supervising this public records search.
Right, now at what point would they say that, that, you know, okay, if this goes on any longer, we're going to have to charge you kind of thing?
It gets back to the communication.
Yeah.
You know, if, if it's going to be longer than this period of time, then, you know, we're probably going to have to charge a fee in this and what the fee will be. You know, they have the right to ask, okay, itemize that fee out so I know what it's based upon. Because it has to be actual cost for providing that service. Data manipulation, this deals with data processing software. It kind of goes along with what you're saying, right? To a certain extent, I know it's not necessarily data processing software. But if, if it's necessary to separate the public record from data processing software, you know, that's something that the county or the government has to bear the cost of separation of that public record. However, the amount charged for access to public records shall not be more than required to recover the direct publication costs, including but not limited to editing, compilation and media production costs incurred by the government body in developing the data processing software, you know, preparing the data processing software for transfer to the person. You know, I don't know that that's something that's going to come up very often because we're not preparing or, or providing the data processing software for the transfer to the person.
Oh, you just started. We're doing it, Zillow and Data, we are Data LLC every month. We are FTP site, Derek is helping create that and they go out and pull that electronically from my site once a month and give it to me.
Yeah, um, well, we're not providing the, the data processing software to provide the information.
Information, correct, right.
And then what you had mentioned are the government body shall request to provide documentation explaining and justifies the amount charged. So how did we get to the amount charged, what's the actual cost for you to be able to justify that? Penalties, there are penalties for violation of either chapter twenty-one or chapter twenty-two to the sunshine laws. First of all, I mentioned earlier that it can be done in civil court. So they can file a lawsuit against, against the government body or against the individual elected official or, or public official regarding the violation. Court can issue injunction, ordering a government body to comply and assess damages from one, minimum of one hundred dollars to a maximum of five hundred dollars. Order that the government body, you know, the official paying the attorney's fees and the court cost for the person who instigated the lawsuit or initiated the lawsuit, not instigated, initiated the lawsuit and remove repeat violators from office. Repeat violators means a person within their term of service. So now we're talking elected officials within their term of service. Doesn't necessarily apply just to elected officials, but I'm using that as an example. You know, so I'm found to have violated the open meetings or open records. And I, the court assesses damage during my four-year term. If I, if I'm, is it determined by the court that I have done it again? I could be, or shall be removed from office, there's no discretion. And that applies to every one of the, the people in this room. So repeat offenders just means two strikes and you're out, basically, two strikes and you're out. If you are knowingly participating in a violation, it increases the damage amount between one thousand and twenty-five hundred. I mentioned this also earlier, ignorance of the law is not defense, okay? So you can't go into the court and say, well, I didn't know that was the law. I didn't know that that would be a violation because everyone's presumed to know the law. But damages will not be assessed against violator, against officials who voted against the violation. So if it's a, for instance, the board of supervisors, if it's really the only one that applies in that situation, you know, if you have someone wanting it to go in a closed session and you vote against it, it should, that shouldn't be in closed session, then you would be immune from, from damages in that situation. Or if, you know, you're in a closed session and, you know, all of a sudden, you know, the rules are not being followed and additional information is discussed, if you get up and leave the room at that point in time, so you refuse to participate in that violation, you'd be immune from any damages. Or if you've engaged in efforts to resist the violation, tried to prevent it, stop it or thwart it in any way, or relied upon a formal opinion from the attorney general or from the county attorney, then you'd be, you'd not be subject to damages. One note, because oftentimes, you know, this happens, a quick call to the attorney, hey, you know, this is what the subject is, are we okay? And notice it has to be in writing, okay? So that opinion has to be in writing. Spur of the moment thing is pretty difficult, but in order to be, and it often happens, I'm saying, don't do it, because I can probably guide you through many situations. But in order to be exempt from the damages, it has to be in writing. Okay, because of potential misunderstanding, miscommunication or misinterpretation of what is being said. Or the last one, they added that one to, if you're getting advice from the Iowa Public Information Board. So what is the Iowa Public Information Board? It is something that, as I mentioned, was created to make it easier to resolve disputes that involve chapters twenty-one and twenty-two. Makes it more efficient for people, cost effective, it's informal, it's an administrative body. And, you know, provides basically free legal resource for citizens and government officials. So it doesn't just apply to citizens. Government officials can ask for their, their advice on different topics and different things. The last sentence there, the board is also one of the few such agencies in the nation with the authority to not only advise, but to enforce the safe sunshine laws. So within the scopes of chapters twenty-two and chapters, or twenty-one to twenty-two, the Iowa Public Information Board has the power to enforce that law. And, and the enforcement serve, we're going to get into now, enforcement abilities. First of all, it's a nine-member board. No more than three shall be representatives of the media and not more than three shall be representatives of city counties or, or other local governments. They're staggered four years, four-year terms. And it is authorized to have at least one employee, attorney, which serves as executive director. So they have an attorney on board who's their executive director. Important to recognize, it's an independent agency. So it's an independent agency, free of any potential influence by any, any county or citizens. They're on their own.
Who appoints them then?
The governor.
Then it's political already.
Well, independent in the sense of, yeah, well, yeah. The, it's appointed by the governor, but they're confirmed by the center.
Okay.
So what are they authorized to do under twenty-three point six? To issue advice or declaratory orders with orders with the force of law regarding applicability of the open records and open meetings law. To receive and investigate complaints alleging violation, violation of the laws and seek resolution through informal assistance, mediation and settlement. If it cannot be, if the complaint cannot be resolved informally and they believe with probable cause that violations occurred, they do have the power to prosecute government bodies in a contested case proceeding, which is under seventeen A administrative procedures. They also, they also can issue subpoenas to investigate complaints and prosecute cases, issue orders with the force of law to require compliance with sunshine laws and offer training in chapters twenty-one and twenty-two to government bodies to disseminate information to the public and to submit an annual report to the governor and legislature making recommendations related to access to cabinet functions. They do not have the power over the judiciary and they do not have the power over the legislative branches or the governor and governor's office. So they're limited in that capacity. And they are limited to addressing issues involving the sunshine laws, chapters twenty-one, twenty-two. Any complaint issued has to be within sixty days of the alleged violation of those laws. Any declaratories issued, declaratory orders issued by the board determining the applicability of the open meetings or records laws have the force of law. Okay, so if they issue a declaratory order, it has to be filed. Amendments, chapter twenty-one, twenty-two provide protection. This is what I mentioned earlier. So if you're relying on written advice from either the IPB and the attorney general or me, you're covered, but they can assess damages or the action taken in violation of the open meetings laws and require a government body or official to take an appropriate remedial action. They do not have the power to remove a person from office. What I was mentioning earlier is if they pursue it under civil law and judiciary and the district court, the court doesn't have the authority or doesn't have any discretion to not remove a person who's violated it twice, okay? But the IPB, the Iowa Public Information Board has the power to pursue that remedy in district court if someone has violated or if they found a violation to have happened previously and it's the second one, okay? So even though they don't have it within their powers of the board, they have the power to pursue it in district court. And that we've already talked about, just provide some protections. Nonetheless, it's just a reminder, all immunity and the construction or application of this chapter should be resolved with openness. And then there's, if you're interested, suggested higher resources. You know, I strongly encourage everyone to look at the Iowa Public Information Board's website. The information that's on there is, is very good and user-friendly. The, they have frequently asked questions, that answer a lot of the questions that would apply to not only the, the board, but also the department heads. And, you know, it's a resource that if a question comes up or a concern comes up, you can go there and usually find the answer. Obviously, you can email the Iowa Public Information Board, email address or call them. Again, they represent, or they, they field questions and can issue declaratory orders for both public, the public officials or government and private individuals. You can come to me, obviously a lot, lot do, and we talk about things. And that's something, you know, that, that my office is always open to any of the supervisors and department heads. If you have a question regarding how these records apply or how these laws apply to your office. The ombudsman, Iowa Attorney General and Iowa Freedom of Information Counsel. There's a website there and also email address. And then obviously, many of those, many of those agencies, we are, you know. Any questions?
Yes.
Sheriff's Office inmate records subject to open records.
Hello, then?
Sheriff's Office's inmates records. Open visits. If someone called me and say, I want inmate so-and-so's records, grievances, claims, disciplinary actions.
There are, that I believe is going to fall under the combined. Some are going to be confidential and some are going to be open records. So, you know, what I can say, matter of fact, right now, I'd like to, to kind of look into that. Maybe see what an inmate record would look like and see what's, what was involved in that. But generally speaking, you know, if you look at it from the standpoint of extensive information, there will be identifying information, obviously that's going to be confidential. But any other issues associated with the potential to be public, we can discuss that. Any questions?
No, very, too much information.
Probably.
I got one quick question. So from a supervisor's standpoint, you gave the example of the citizen coming to each of us directly. So let's say I have a concern and, you know, I went and said, hey, Josh, you know, what do you think about the job our county attorney's doing? And then, you know, I said, I went to Kyle and said, hey, what do you think? Being that I'm the third one in that situation, is that a walking form?
Yeah, sure, I want to ask him.
Right, right. That's, that's why I wanted to.
Yeah, if I'm asking each of you different situation, but yeah, if you're asking other members of the, the board, other supervisors.
Yep.
Then you're, you're probably looking at a potential.
Right.
For a walking.
Which you should always err in the side of.
Yeah, and, you know, ask those things.
What, what happens if it's a member of the public, they comes to each of us individually, you know, asking our opinions, but then they go and share what one of us had said to another supervisor? What happens at that point?
That's up to them.
Okay.
Yeah, see, seeing that's the beautiful thing about the sunshine laws only applies to government. What the public does out there, they can do that. So, you know, you know, as long as, you know, you're not the one that's sharing that back and forth between, you know, the majority of you, you're fine.
Yeah.
Yeah. So if you look at it from the standpoint of, when you receive that information, well, you know, this supervisor said this, you know, what do you think about that? You know, at that point in time, you can offer your opinion. But realize that, well, a better approach would be, you know what? If that supervisor believes that, that's fine. I'm going to provide my reasons for what I believe in open session. You know, anytime you defer to the open meeting and discuss and decide at that point in time, you're going to be better off. But again, if it's a member of the public saying, hey, you know, this supervisor believes this, what's your position? You can share your position with them. You can't just call up, well, actually, two or more additional supervisors and say, hey, you know, what's your position on this and how are you going to vote? Or those types of things, because then you have that rolling for them.
Yeah.
But yeah, a member of the public, you know, they share, because I spoke with, you know, supervisor Jarks or supervisor Steck or, you know, it's, it's, yeah, that's fine, you're just getting information.
Okay. Too bad the state doesn't have the same rules.
They do.
They don't use them.
Sure they do.
How do they always know who's going to vote for what? Comes out of committee and they pretty well know who's.
Well, interesting, you know, there's different rules that apply to, like caucuses and that sort of thing. But yeah, they're not exempt from the open meetings and open records law.
They have parameters leading up to their vote.
Yeah, like I said, you know, oftentimes caucuses are when they, you know, have those discussions and determinations and that. You know, I'm not, not saying that, you know, there aren't some legislative statement, but it's not my concern because I'm just representing the county.
I mean, we always hear, who's going to vote how before it comes out of the caucus.
Right. Anything else?
Well, thanks, Todd.
Can you possibly put this on the public drive or drive somewhere so we can?
Well, the, oh, I should have probably brought that up. I did say that Iowa Public Information Board created this all.
Yeah, it's, yeah, you brought it.
Just my notes.
Okay.
Yeah, just my notes and, I mean, I can, I can. Yeah, just my notes, and I mean, I can, I can, I have to check the Iowa Public Information Board if you have any problems with that, but, no, I mean, I, just my discussion notes. But yeah, the entire PowerPoint presentation is on the Iowa Public Information Board website, under, what's the heading? I think it's instruction, instruction, something like that, section. Yeah. I should tell you that since we're all here. Under training, Iowa Sunshine Law, and Iowa Sunshine Laws two thousand sixteen.
Any other questions for Todd? Thanks again, Todd. We do appreciate it. It actually should be reviewed often than what we do. We should review this.
You know what, and that was one of the things I was going to start with. I don't have a problem doing it annually.
I don't see anything wrong with my annual, or annually.
You know, because like I mentioned earlier, I think it's wise to refresh a person's understanding of those, because oftentimes, you know, as I mentioned, communication does a lot with, you know, the perception that there's something, you know, that's being hidden or done, you know, behind the scenes type of thing. You know, if you can provide that communication, provide that, you know, that ability for the public to know what's going on, you're going to, you're going to resolve a lot. But, you know, oftentimes, there are questions, and I have it many times from somebody elected official, some department heads. You know, I got this record request. Can I give it to them? You know, that's why I kind of wanted to remind them that, you know, there's seventy-five things that can be considered confidential. Only a handful of them, maybe two handfuls, that would really apply to us. And so, you know, be familiar with that, because, you know, there's oftentimes something that, you know, Tammy has in the auditor's office I'm not familiar with. And when you mentioned a hundred thousand pages of drainage directory, I know what a drainage record consists of, you know, so.
It goes back to when it was originated, the district.
Which, you know, may be, may be something that someone wants, but that communication to find out, and the, you know, the information that you say, well, if you're wanting all a hundred thousand, it's going to take considerable amount of time to do that, and staff time to do that, to compile those records. So this is going to be the estimated cost because of this. You know, one employee over the course of this amount of time, you know, minus the things that can't be considered part of the actual cost to find out if that's what they really want. But, yeah, you know, other than, I mean, I can't really speak, because there are a lot of different cases that could apply, but I would venture the guess that most people don't want a hundred thousand pages of records.
The only other issue I had is one, oh, this is before you guys were around. We had somebody that went into the drainage room and just walked in there because it wasn't locked, and started going through and taking files out, looking through files without anybody.
Have to request.
They have to come and ask, they go in, and his point was, it's my records. No, it's the county's records.
It's the drainage districts.
Yeah, in those situations, but there has to be a request.
Right.
And they have to allow supervision in situations where supervision is necessary.
We had a little issue with that with one person, and I think we got.
I think I remember that situation. I think it was something that was brought to my attention too, but yeah, there has to be requests. Now, one thing that I had a note in my thing to remember to say this is the request, we can't demand that they be here in person. So in other words, you know, someone calls us up, he says, I want these sent to, you know, and if it's complicated, I mentioned, hey, can you kind of email me that, so I know exactly. But they do not have to request it in person. They can do it by email, mail, whatever. We get, I get record requests, it's always interesting, because usually, people from outside the state, or, you know, some part of the United States that's far away, will always say, under the freedom of information, which is not applicable, because we are not the federal government, which is only applicable to the federal government. But you do have the right to public records, which is chapter twenty-two of our, of our Iowa Code. So, but, you know, they always say that. So when someone says, hey, under freedom, yeah, okay, fine. You know, only an attorney would find that to be interesting, you know, but, yeah, so that.
Minor details.
Those interesting nuances, but, you know, the reality is, I think, in looking over the last couple of years, the part that probably generated some of the complaints was just not the communication. That communication solves a lot in a lot of different situations, not just the Sunshine Laws. You know, it's, communication is important, you know, just so that there's a firm understanding and not a missing understanding.
No, I think it's very important, especially for newly elected officials, to have this briefing, or whatever you want.
Yeah, this is the very first time we've done it, so there are little hiccups here and there, but I think.
I didn't realize it was your first time.
Yep.
So that's.
Oh, you are the first, and so your newly elected supervisors, again, welcome, but also haven't done it for any of the board's briefs, and we've talked about it. We've had situations where I've given advice on certain areas of the Sunshine Laws, but never presented a complete overview of it. And, you know, I can't, can't take any credit for that PowerPoint, which was well done, and Iowa Public Information Board, who is the board that is the, you know, is the board that, you know, is in the know, or has all of the information regarding that. Couldn't have done anything better, and it's a wonderful resource. But, yeah, I do agree. I do agree that this would be something that on an annual basis would be nice, not just for you guys, but for the other elected officials and department heads, because we're all impacted. You know, mine is, my office is probably not as impacted as others, because most people understand a lot of what I do is confidential. But, you know, with that being said, I still work closely with all of the departments in situations where a complaint is issued, communication with the Iowa Public Information Board. Most of the time, you know, my response is on behalf of the the person that I'm representing, or the entity that I'm representing, is, well, tell me what happened, you know, and it's largely in their words, so. But I appreciate the opportunity, guys, and, you know, if you want me to do it annually, just let me know.
I, I don't think it would be a.
Definitely after, after an election.
Yeah, every four years, or every two years, actually.
Yeah, every two years, early on in the year, because, you know, there's some information I got today that, you know, I probably could have had some questions from people a little bit differently had I known, you know.
Yeah, absolutely. Annual is probably too often, every two years.
Every two years.
So, you know, we just got done with an election, so if we do it in two years, then, yeah.
You'll have two more new supervisors to educate.
Yeah, well.
Probably.
That'd be, that'd be good, and I will, because ultimately, and I've said many times, you know, my goal is to make everything as transparent as possible, and I know that's oftentimes true, too. And so, it's, you know, it's important that we do everything we can in the issue that happens. I think to a large extent, you know, when there's controversy or negative, negative things that are said about government, a lot of it has to do with the fact that they they're not, they're not getting the information, or they're not, they're not feeling that they're part of government, or they don't know, you know, why they're deciding things the way they do. And I'm not just talking about local, I'm pretty much saying federal government, you know, looking at it from a standpoint, how much contention there is out there between the political parties and that type of thing, and accusations flying. If the people feel that they're part of it, and they're informed, oftentimes, they can accept something they don't necessarily agree with as far as the decision being made, as long as they knew that they're part of the process. I think that's important. I say oftentimes, not always. So.
Todd, is that your quote of my book there?
It is. I brought the actual law, just to increase the.
Fifteen days? I figured.
Thanks, Todd.
Yeah.
We are up to time with our auditor.
Okay, next week's agenda, we have approved cigarette permits for a beta violation, spring valley bill course. We have our budget amendment hearing, and to approve the resolution for the budget amendments. And we have a joint teleconference with Winnebago County for a public hearing on approval of the updated classification of code NWK sixty-eight dash one thirty-six, main open digital video. That's it for next week, so far. Yeah, I have that written, yeah, I'm not sure, but yes, hopefully that also. And then I don't think I have anything.
Sure.
Uh, no. I attended the initial kickoff for the Sioux County Hazard Mitigation Planning at the EMA Building. Just kind of went through the initial information gathering, just kind of discussing what the process is going forward on, you know, spelling out what's all going to be in the plan, and, you know, just basically, just an introductory, an introductory meeting. But there was a lot of good information discussed and shared. Some people that are in there have experience with, you know, hazard mitigation planning and stuff like that, so it'll be interesting.
Stecker?
I did not have any meetings this week, but we have EMS meeting schedules for tonight. Phil sent out an email yesterday about that. The main purpose of the meeting is to review the agreement between the county and the cities for asset transfer. But we have not received a final document from Todd, even as of now. So I'm going to try and visit with him right after the meeting and see if he's going to have that, otherwise, I don't know if we will actually have the meeting, or if we'll cancel it, but that's really the only thing that I think is kind of planned. From the discussion this morning during public discussion, and the conversations during the ordinance discussion, I guess I would bring up to the board there's been decisions, actions, whatever, that have been taken by current and previous members of the board that anyone could criticize at any point in time, but seems like anything that someone has an issue with me continuously gets brought up in the board meeting, and we rehash things over and over. I guess I, I don't feel that's completely appropriate for a boardroom, for business conversation. So I would like some thoughts on that, because there's, there's obviously a lot of other situations that could be rehashed time and time again that aren't.
Don't disagree with you totally, but the problem is you don't know what somebody's going to say until they say it.
Well, they could be asked after that statement to refrain from repeating things and keep their comments respectful and professional. Would be my suggestion.
I'd say especially during the actual agenda item being public doesn't really, as, just.
I just.
They don't really have a right to talk, I mean, we let them, of course, it's fine, but, you know.
Open comments, I mean, we.
Public comment, I don't even have a lot of.
Restricted anything on.
Yeah. During the meeting is one thing, public comments is kind of another.
Public comments is.
But it would be good to, I, no, I understand, it does happen during the meeting, too. It would be good to maybe regulate some of that, too.
I mean, the number of times the trip to DC has been brought up is probably almost in the double digits by now.
No, that was a little, no, that was not pertaining to anything we're discussing today.
No, there's, there's a lot of places.
Anything we were talking about.
There's a lot of places X number of dollars could be discussed. I'm not even going to get into the specifics of his comment, but that's a, that opens up big can of worms, and I don't know if we should go down that path, but if we do, we do.
Yeah, and, and, you know, I can say that gentleman that made the comment that we gave a thraces of a hundred thousand dollars last year, you know, is that, has anything to do with what we're talking about?
It doesn't, and that's, that's why.
It has nothing to do with it.
That's, that's why I bring this up, because.
Should that enter into our decision? No, but did he have a right to say it? I think he did.
That was, that was the first time that comment has been brought up in the boardroom, so that's, that's one point of discussion. But my point is there's been specific items that have been brought up consistently and repeatedly that should not be repeated on a daily basis.
I don't know how you stop people from saying it. Because it's the public, right back to Todd just got done saying it's public, and they have a right to say what they want to say most of the time.
During public comment. So if, if no one wants to change how it's handled, I guess that will change how I present information, because I get conversations from constituents and citizens even outside my district on a regular basis, but they don't always come up in the boardroom.
Anything else?
Nope.
I went to a NiOCog meeting last night. There's a possibility that there's going to be some funding for home repair. It will come out in June, and so if I find out anything, I'll bring it to the board for consideration. That's a possibility, it's not a fact check. We okayed the transportation planning work program for the twenty-four year, fiscal year twenty-four. Quite a bit of that is done by the county engineers, and it's also, some of the state programs are discussed, like improvement on the road between here and Garner. There is a nonprofit childcare grant that's available for ten thousand dollars in case anybody in the county has a want or a need for childcare and wants to get a grant for planning. There is a grant for ten thousand dollars to NiOCog.
That's like starting capital daycare?
Right, is to do planning and informational, because that's something, there's never been a grant before, to do any of the pulmonary work for childcare.
That's definitely a hurdle.
Yeah, so there is that available. We talked about the funding for transit, and that comes through two point nine eight. two point nine eight four oh six two six four for new vehicle. Or when you pay your taxes on a vehicle that you buy new or used, they take that much money out of it and that's how it goes to public transit. And for our district, it's, uh, nine hundred eighty-seven thousand five hundred and sixteen dollars. And we get two million one hundred and thirty-five thousand six hundred and seventy-six dollars in federal assistance for transit. Um, we applied for a grant to, uh, build a garage in Forest City to house the transportation that's there. Um, highly unlikely that we'll get it, but we applied anyhow. The money's very limited. I think there's a million dollars in the whole state, so I doubt that we get half of it. And that's probably all the highlights for the meeting. Anything else the board has? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Yeah.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and second to adjourn. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. For adjourn.
Well, you should be able to see it now. She'd be able to.
The boardroom or?
All right, I did email it to her too, so, all right, thank you.
Probably have to go through the email.
We shouldn't have to have the email.
Should just be on your calendar.
So open your emails. You got open email.
Oh, okay.
And then hit calendar.
Thank you.
Share other calendars, boardroom.
Yeah, I have that open right now.
Just be bored. Bored.
Like your shared calendars.
There's nothing there. It would be showing up on re. Why I've been saying I gotta go. Um, she sent one, so I think I have to go through.
Accepted or something.
Where's the wellness? I gotta put on wellness for.
Oh, your committees.
Yeah, keep seeing cable.
I haven't done wellness?
No, that's why, that's why I know.
We got, we got wellness meeting tomorrow, our safety.
Yeah.
I don't think I'm going to be able to go.
Yeah, thanks. You too.